Hi.
My name's J.C. McCauley.
I'm Naisha McCauley. And you're watching accessTV.org.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Great to see everyone and see you around. We have a really exciting opportunity. Agenda items tonight. It was really important for us to come out to the community because this would be around a community asset that has been a community asset for quite some time and has been a symbol in the community and has, to some extent, fell out of repair. And it's useful life, if you will. And now is an opportunity through the state of Connecticut to rebuild that community asset. So it was important again for us to come out to the community that would directly be impacted of this community asset for Dylan Stadium. We have, I think, a couple items on the agenda. But the first item is a presentation from the administration around the Dylan Stadium renovation concept, if you will, and a new partnership. This is an opportunity for council to hear a full presentation of kind of how we got here. And also, an opportunity for the community to provide commentary. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, we were just notified that we... I think we had to be out of here by 8:00, 8:30. So we're really going to try to get through this presentation and provide enough public comment as possible for tonight. But we have subsequent opportunities for public comment as well. So without further ado, I want to again say thank you for everyone to come out. It's a good, good crowd out here. I'm glad to see a packed room. And I'm here with my colleagues. So we're going to get started. And I'll move to item number one. Communication from Mayor Bronin with a company resolution concerning authorization to enter into a license agreement with Capital Region Development Authority for the operation of Dylan Stadium. We have Kylie Goslin here from Development Services, who will be leading the presentation on behalf of the administration. Kylie, you have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Can everybody hear me? Are we good? All right, great. I will try to work through this presentation quickly. It's not too long. And then there'll be an opportunity for questions a bit later. Today, what I wanted to do is just cover some basic points about the goals of this potential project. And then walk through the, in a high-level format, the basic terms that we've outlined for a partnership between the city of Hartford, Hartford Sports Group, and the Capital Region Development Authority. We have representatives from all those groups here tonight to help answer questions. Alisa? So apologies for the small type. I guess my picture didn't show up on this one. So if they are, I don't know why they're not coming up. There are photos, but that's okay. So we wanted to start out again talking about what the goals are. The project began as Council President Thane started when we're looking at the useful life of this project. And it's become an issue in recent months because, primarily because the ADA compliance issues have gotten to the point where the city has been unable to use the stadium in its primary format or its main use for a long time. The first goal would be to restore Dylan Stadium as a community asset available for use by community groups to minimize any financial exposure to the city. Sorry, that's my own phone. And to make Dylan the home for professional soccer team. Again, furthering the revitalization that we're already seeing in Coltsville and providing an economic boost for that neighborhood. This city has taken quite a bit of time and hopefully been what I think is quite transparent in this process. We reached out to CRDA back in the fall to issue an RFP for the stadium, to partner with them, to make this a public process. We received those responses. And as many of you are aware, CRDA held a public meeting where those responses were presented. CRDA recommended that the city consider working with Hartford Sports Group, which we've been in discussions with since then. In addition to the public meeting with CRDA, we've had multiple meetings with other community groups. The Park and Rec Advisory Commission, as well as the Siskon NRZ have met with HSG as well as myself. And since December, we've all been in conversations, including city council and other members of the community, to gather input as we've crafted this proposal. Okay, so my pictures are not showing up. So this is very boring, and I apologize. Oh, can we go back to the last one real quick there? So how would the renovation of Dylan be funded? So as many of you are aware, there's a $10 million proposal on the table. And in February of 2018, that $10 million funding stream came through CRDA, through the State Bond Commission. These were funds that the bond commission had already authorized, or the General Assembly, I should say, had already authorized for use as neighborhood investment. And that was for CRDA, again, to work outside of its normal downtown boundaries to create some investment in Hartford. Next. This is the basic structure we're working with. So as you've all, many of you have heard at this point, the city of Hartford is proposing to enter into a license agreement with CRDA. That is, that the city would still retain ownership of Dylan Stadium, but we would effectively license the stadium to CRDA. CRDA would then work to select a stadium manager and work with Hartford Sports Group to implement the terms of this proposal that both the city and HSG have found satisfactory. So the terms in the term sheet that was provided, there are also copies at that table. That's what will create the stadium use agreement that HSG will be implementing with Serta. Next. So perhaps our most important consideration. Who's paying for what? In our current proposal, there would be a $300,000 annual license fee that our friends at Hartford Sports Group would be paying into a fund that would be maintained by Serta. That will cover overhead expenses, so management costs, as well as basic maintenance for the stadium. There will also be a $25,000 community use fund payment coming out of the naming rights. HSG will be, again, putting that into a fund that the city will work with CRDA to expend in a way that the city determines that we would like to spend it. And that will be a community process determining how we would like to allocate those funds. All game day expenses related to HSG's actual soccer games, as well as any other promoted events that they'll be hosting, will be covered by HSG. That includes the utilities for their actual use of the stadium and the time that they're preparing the stadium for those event days. They're responsible for Hartford Police Department costs outside of the stadium, as well as private security for in-stadium purposes during their events. They'll also have to hold various insurance policies and provide that the city has an additional surety on those policies. The city's expenses are really things that the city is already covering. So our current costs for Dylan are really related to utilities. Lights, water, those sorts of things. We will continue to pay those. But again, only for those days when the city is using the stadium for a community use or when no one's using the stadium. The utilities that are expended, if you will, during HSG's use of the stadium will be paid for by HSG. So the city will continue to cover utilities for community costs in days when no one is using the stadium. HSG will also pay for the first $10,000 of electric for those days as well. Next. Serta is responsible for overseeing and using that $10 million to rehab the stadium. There will also be a turf replacement included. So with the purchase of the initial artificial turf, which will allow more community use, we get an additional turf replacement, which should come due depending on the amount of use between eight and 15 years. This fund will also create opportunities to make investments in neighboring Colt Park to improve fields there. And then $250,000 of that $10 million will be set aside in a capital reserve fund. That's a fund that CRDA, in conjunction with the city, will be able to draw on to make major repairs, capital improvements to the stadium over time as necessary. Next. So in terms of funds coming into the stadium, part of the beauty, I think, of this public-private partnership is that there is a sort of sharing of costs and revenues here. But as you'll notice, HSG is taking in revenue from its own events. So ticket revenue, as well as merchandise, parking, concessions, that sort of thing. They'll also take in revenue for signage and naming rights. Again, $25,000 of that naming rights will go back for the community use. In exchange, they're covering the $25,000, as well as the $300,000 of the annual license fee that we mentioned. And unused funds for both those will sort of roll over for future use. Next. In terms of how we anticipate the stadium being used and sort of what buckets of events will be hosted at the stadium, we broke it down broadly into these four concepts. The first are community use. So these would be our smaller events, youth soccer, where you have low attendance, similar to the way the system operates now. If you want to use the lights, there's a small added expense for that. And these would be scheduled with the city on a first-come, first-served basis. Community events would be larger events. And for those of you who may be familiar with our special events permitting process at the city that covers parades and other larger events in our parks, we would route these larger events through that special events permitting process. And that allows for the calculation of costs, such as police or cleanup costs, other things that the city wouldn't normally bear but which the event holder will pay. So for larger events, we'll use our existing special events permitting process for those. Promoted events are events that HSG would be hosting other than their normal soccer events. So these may be professional lacrosse games or collegiate matches that they bring in. And then HSG events will be their basic soccer games. Next. For purposes of scheduling the dates, what we wanted to do is make sure that at the bare minimum, 50% of the sort of usable seasonal time in the stadium would be blocked out and available for community use. So the way we anticipate the scheduling working is that HSG will get priority scheduling for 40 dates. And this is anticipated to cover their soccer games. So there may be anywhere between 20 and 30, they estimate, in that first year. And then in year two, they'll have the option to schedule some more events, maybe bringing in some more lacrosse games or other collegiate types of games. HSG also has a prep time, 24 hours, to any event that they're hosting. The city will have the right to schedule up to, or more, actually, a minimum, I'm sorry, 131 days between March 15th and the end of November. HSG may then, after the community has selected its dates, select additional dates if they want to use from dates that the community hasn't also selected. However, community users will still have the right to come in and select dates throughout the season as they're available. And then HSG will have some priority to, if they make the playoffs, to have some priority dates for playoff games or games that are rescheduled due to weather. Next. So in the end, the benefits that we would expect to see or hope to see with the proposal that we have before council would be one that Dylan's brought back to productive ADA-compliant use and available for community use, that Colt Park also sees some benefit and improvements. Again, the city will retain ownership of Dylan with, again, minimal financial hit to the city, again, paying for costs for the most part that we already cover. Extensive opportunities for community use. Hartford USL team with, hopefully, a game day boost for local businesses. And some Hartford hiring benefits with a 50% Hartford hiring target for vendors working at Dylan. I think that's it, correct? Yep. That's the end of the formal presentation. So we'll take questions now. Myself, HSG, as well as CRDA are available.
Great, thank you. No clapping yet. Bruce, I see Bruce Van Del, who's here, who's representing and the key principal of HSG Group. So wondering if you had anything to add before we got into Q and A.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, council. It's great to be here tonight and look forward to answering questions. I think Kylie laid out the concept very well. We see this as a great opportunity to bring Dylan Stadium back up, to have community use, to have no risk for the city in terms of expenses, and to do something really positive for the city of Hartford, and ultimately, for the youth of Hartford, which is so important to us. So I look forward to meeting everybody. I've had a couple conversations already. And taking any questions. And I'm assuming Kylie will too. But thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. So at this point, I will open it up to my colleagues for questions. So who would like to kick us off? Don't everybody talk at once. Because I know you all have a lot of burning questions. Councilman Deutsch, thank you.
Thank you. Being here at this end, I guess I'll start. One of the questions was that vendors must work to ensure 50% to work at the stadium, our residents of the city. Unless I've missed it, though, I don't see the requirement that there be a living wage paid to those who work in the stadium. And for those who are not familiar, a living wage is more than the minimum wage. And would it apply to those who, let's say, are serving food, which is more than they might get at the baseball stadium? Would it apply to other jobs? A living wage somewhat more manageable for some family members? What's the regulation?
That's a great question. The living wage front is a matter of good faith and commitment to provide opportunities for the hiring Hartford residents. Again, any outside vendor, and this is in the term sheet, any outside vendor that enters into a contract to provide management services at Dylan Stadium will be subject to the city's living wage ordinance. That doesn't apply to seasonal workers, but anybody else.
I think Corporation Counsel is going to chime in as well.
Howard Rifkin, Corporation Counsel. Councilman Deutsch, the language and the commitment with respect to Dylan parallels the commitment that was made around the yard goats. And so anybody who works directly for, as a permanent, full-time employee for the operations manager of Dylan Stadium, the living wage would apply. There is an exception, as Kylie mentioned, to seasonal workers under the Federal Labor Standards Act, which is essentially what applies now with respect to Dunkin' Donuts Park.
Any other questions, Councilman Deutsch?
I'll save them for my colleagues.
Okay. Councilman Clark?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Interested to know what are the outreach efforts going to be far as vendors? Have you looked at who you're going to be looking at? Are they going to be Hartford preference for Hartford-based businesses, minority businesses?
I guess that's a question for you, Bruce.
I guess so. So to begin with, the idea, the concept is the CRDA is going to be working with Spectra, which is, has an existing relationship who operates at the Civic Center, and I believe at Rentschler, too. And so that's number one. And that's most of the actual, I guess, people and facilities that we'll be hiring. I'm trying to think if there's any others that you're thinking of, council, and that might...
I'm also interested regarding the contractors on the stadium building.
That really is up to the CRDA. They're running the bill. So I don't know if they'd like to talk to that.
I see Mike Freeman here. Do you want to comment on that? Mike? We have people listening in at home, so...
The construction contracts will be led through state procurement. We will establish within that a requirement to hire Hartford residents. The question is, every skill's going to be different. It's going to be a lot of short-term work. But it will be contractor compliance requirements that would have Hartford residency to them. That would be in the actual construction site. That's different than the operational side, which goes with a workforce that's already in place at the XL.
Can you tell us what the percentage is for Hartford residents?
At the XL?
For the construction side.
Well, the target is 50%, I understand, right? Construction will work whatever number you want to work with. But I mean, we're not hung up on what the number will be. We've done this before, 30, 40, and 50.
Okay.
It's just, it's got to be a goal. If it's a requirement, sometimes we just stumble and can't get there. So it's a goal, and that's what we'll go after.
And just to add on that, Mike, really quick, because you referenced, obviously, Spectra, who you have an existing relationship with that manages the XL Center. And it's my understanding that those employees are union employees, correct?
Correct. Correct. The idea here is to utilize the workforce we presently have at the XL Center and extend the number of hours they get to work by the Dylan opportunity. That's a unionized workforce that's in place. Overwhelmingly, it's Hartford residents. The number of man-hours is over 50%, Hartford man-hours. Now, down the line, if we should build an alternate route and operate the stadium without using the XL workforce, then we would trigger these provisions you see here on the community benefit screen.
Thank you. Councilman Clark? I think he has...
I got one more.
One more question?
Yes. Regarding the, and this is for the city, the community access currently, if I'm not mistaken, the scheduling for Dylan Stadium was with Public Works. Is now that going to be shifted to Development Services? Or is it going to stay within Public Works? Since it's going to be now within the new process of scheduling for special events?
That's a great question. So there's two sort of buckets that we're putting community events into. The smaller, again, the smaller events, youth soccer league playing a band that's setting up for competition. I think we're practicing for competition were the two that we had, those everyday uses. We would anticipate that those still go through the normal booking process for the city. And over the next year, we'll take some time to look at that DPW process and ensure that it's working the way we want it to work and make sure that if there are improvements to that system, that we can do that. That information will get communicated to whoever the stadium manager is so that we make sure that we're blocking out those dates. The larger community events that I mentioned, so maybe it's a regional soccer championship where you might be expecting 1,000 people to come. You need a police officer. Maybe you need an EMT. Those events are going to go through the special events permitting process that you all are familiar with. So we'll have a system in place to sort of help determine which buckets those go in. But those are broadly the two categories. Folks who need more than someone to open the stadium and turn on the lights, and it's a larger event, we're going to send them through that special event process because it allows us to take a holistic view of other city resources they might need and help calculate those costs, both for ourselves and for the event holder.
So follow-up question, Hartford Public Schools.
Yep.
They will go through that first process and not the extensive process?
Theoretically. If it's a really large game, if the Turkey Day game, we anticipate having 2,000 people, we'll work with them similar to the special event process. That might be an ideal candidate for using those 25,000 funds to help offset costs. But yeah, we anticipate HPS being a user of the stadium on the community use component.
Good, thank you.
Councilwoman Jennings, and then Councilman Sanchez.
Yes. Thank you. I just wanted to know, how will reporting take place to the city relative to hiring of Hartford residents, selection of vendors, and other things that, you know, the construction part of it? I know that the School Building Committee has an automated system where we get monthly reports on exactly how much the project is, how much has been spent on the project, what percentage of certified payrolls goes to the Hartford residents, which percent goes to non-Hartford residents. And then we also have it broken down by race. So how will the reporting take place? And do you have an automated system?
We're familiar with the program. We use it ourself in the Front Street District. The Adrians Landing District have all used. Same reporting requirements. We would have to retain. We do not have an automated system. We have a consultant who does that tracking for us, produces the monthly reports. And those obviously are available to the city. Keep in mind, too, that the city has three seats on our board. And we discuss these projects every month. So there's lots of opportunities for the city to be informed as to how this project's moving along. But monthly reports are common and routine. And they do break it down by hiring requirements.
Thank you. Follow-up question, Madam Chair? Okay. Will we be, as a city council, be able to get those monthly reports?
Yeah, they're public information.
Okay.
They'll be distributed to the city. How they distribute internal is with the city.
Okay.
We can work on that process.
Right, we can work on that process and get the reports. All right. Additionally, will there be money-making events outside of the soccer games? And if so, will the city be getting a portion? I know under the stadium, the ballpark, the city gets 30% of the net for the activities and events. So will the city be receiving any part of the net for this stadium if there's money-making entities?
Yeah, I'm going to punt to the city and the team on that one. We're the operators, not the promoters.
The short answer is no. HSG will retain the revenue for those events. And that's primarily because they're the ones that are going to be paying for those events and running them. So if they choose to host an event there, like a concert or a collegiate game, they're going to be the ones paying for the police officers, for the overhead associated with that event, for the utilities for that event. So they would collect the revenue from that event.
Through you, Madam Chair. So unlike the ballpark, the ball stadium, the Yard Goat Stadium, unlike that, that part of the contract is non-existent with this part. So that if the promoters make money, the way it's set up with the Yard Goats, we get 30%.
Right.
Of the, you know, the city gets 30%. So that part was left out of this contract? Did you generally pattern this contract after the stadium?
So before you answer that question, because I had a similar question, I think it may be helpful, Kylie, to explain the difference between our relationship and arrangement with the Yard Goats and Dylan Stadium. And Howard, you may want to jump in as well. But I think that's important. That's kind of just level setting to understand to your question as well.
Okay, I guess my question is more, how will the city make money off this?
So our goal as the city is to make sure that we have the stadium available for community use and that we are able to maintain it. And the way we're able to maintain it... And the way we're able to maintain it is because we have a large-scale tenant like Bruce and his team, and in order for them to be able to pay for the overhead and the day-to-day maintenance of the stadium year-round, they are at liberty to host events there that generate expenses. So, the difference between, you know, our stadium, or the, I'm sorry, the Dillon Stadium deal and the Yard Goats, I'll let Howard go into more detail, but we're not paying for the stadium. We paid for the last stadium. CRDA is through the state, we're able to rehabilitate this existing stadium, but we're not doing anything other than paying the basic utilities and owning the stadium so that the community can use it. But the cost being borne to actually operate this stadium, to make everyday repairs, again, to have a stadium manager that coordinates, that's something HSG is paying for, and there's, ultimately, they're paying the cost even if they go above the $300,000 threshold, they're the ones on the hook for those expenses. So, they're able to, if they're able to generate additional revenue to offset that cost, it really helps the city to have a stadium that everybody can use. Without them being able to do that, we wouldn't be able to use the stadium, and the city wouldn't be able to afford to maintain it. I'll let Howard step in, though, with any additional commentary on the Yard Goat.
Just to add this, it's important for everybody to understand is that the city, or through the stadium authority, issued bonds to pay for the construction of Dunkin' Donuts Stadium, Dunkin' Donuts Park. And here, it's the state of Connecticut through CRDA that's financing the rehabilitation of Dillon Stadium. So, the kinds of revenues, Councilwoman Jennings, that you were referring to as part of the Yard Goats deal, was essentially a way of showing a revenue stream to support the retirement of the debt that was issued essentially by the city to support the construction of the stadium. So, there's a huge distinction there.
Thank you, I appreciate that. One last question. There was 10 million, $10 million was appropriated through state bonds, correct? My question is, will Certa be paid, and if so, how much?
I wish we get paid. It is not built in. There generally is a small administrative fee for the construction staff that has to allocate its hours to it, produce the reports that you're asking about. There are administrative fees that go towards that. Generally speaking, it runs between 5% and 6% of the overhead. That's a billing that goes internal to pay for the staff salaries, but that's it. There's no fee above what it takes for man-hours to chase the contractors around on the site.
Thank you. And how much is the 5% or 6% overhead? What does that come to? I don't have my calculator.
About 7 or 8 million, or something like that.
7 or 8 million? Whoa, let me pull out my calculator.
It's really, it's covering man-hours, essentially.
How much?
So, it's 5% of basically the 6 to 7 million dollars that it will cost to build the stadium? 10 million, so it's 5% of the 10 million, so...
So, what does that come to?
500,000.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Sanchez?
Good evening. This is a question about the hiring, employment. Mr. Freeman?
You're in the hot seat today.
Not even my deal.
So, just to get a better understanding, the hiring through the contractors, is all union, is what you stated?
No.
No?
No, no, no. The operating side, if we utilize the staff at the XL Center to operate Dillon, which is our intent, that's a union workforce.
Okay.
That's different than the construction. Construction will be prevailing wages according to state law, whether that's a union or not a union is a separate question.
All right, so then, so therefore, we're able to hire within the city our residents to work, whether they're union or not, and then do we also have a training program so that they can develop some skills to also work in the, with the contractors in development?
Well, I don't want to overpromise what's going on here. There will be contractors hired that will have a priority for Hartford residents. Their training programs and things of that nature would have to be figured out subsequently. I don't have an answer for you on that.
Okay. And do we have any kind of language in there with the, in the contract?
No.
No? All right, my next question is, the 25,000 Community Use Fund, is that for a particular neighborhood, is that to be used throughout the city?
So, that fund is for us to use throughout the city to help offset community costs, and we as a community can decide, similarly to the booking process, that we want, we're going to look at over the next year. That's a thing, an item that we can all talk about, how we want to allocate those funds, whether it's to schools or a specific Hartford, you know, focus on youth, we can talk about how those are, how that fund is allocated. That's at the city's discretion to determine how we want to allocate that to offset those costs.
Okay, thank you. Then I just want to move on, as far as the Colts Park improvement. Once this improvement is done, is it going to be ADA compliant?
Any work we do prioritizes ADA. So, any improvements to the park, those aspects will be ADA compliant. We won't be making the entire park ADA compliant, because that's, frankly, that's all you'd be doing, you wouldn't be making other improvements.
Okay, because right now, it's my understanding, if I recall right, we're not ADA compliant.
We're not at the park, nor at Dillon.
Right, right. Okay. And do we know what's the percentage that will become ADA compliant?
Percentage? Well, Dillon will be 100%.
Well, Colts Park?
I couldn't give you that. Our deferral on Colts Park is working with the city's master plan for the park, and the city will prioritize how it wants to spend those money in the park. That has yet to be, been defined. The presumption is we improve the playing field. But, that's my presumption. Where the money goes is going to be up to the city to determine how they want to invest. The 2 million has been allocated to Colt.
Okay, thank you. And this is, the next question is for HSG. Right now, I'm curious, how many meetings you held so far with the community? And the city?
A lot. This has been a long process. We've tried to make ourselves available. We've reached out to the local NRZ, also to the park community. Uh-oh, I need my glasses. Met with the Los Amigos Softball League and Pete Mercado, met with Hartford Boxing, Hartford Football, Friends of Colt Park, CSS, Ciscan they call it, I guess. I have dates, too, Councilman, if you want me to supply it to the council.
Yes, please.
Working with the Hartford Boys and Girls Club, Hartford Youth Soccer.
Okay, so men?
Crack, Prac, Crack, Prac. Been on the radio as much as I can. So, we've tried to reach out and make ourselves available.
And are you still having more meetings in the near future before this comes up to council?
Yeah, we have a meeting on Thursday with Prac. Prac. And there's other meetings going on with individual groups from different communities.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll have Minority Leader, Pim Guedes, and then Councilman Gill.
Can people hear me? Yeah. Thanks for the presentation. So, before we came in tonight, you know, it was great that the meeting started at 6:30 and not 6:00, because we got a chance to talk to the people of this neighborhood, and also regular residents who live in Hartford and want to know more about what's going to happen with this development. But one of the questions that came up was in reference to the community use, in terms of being able to use the Dillon Stadium. And if you could just walk us through that again, in terms of the potential dates, the window, the windows of potential dates that the community would have access to.
So, that was our primary concern, or my primary concern in working on this deal, was to ensure that, aside from the city keeping its costs to next to zero, was to make sure that we had as much community use as we could get out of the stadium. That's the whole reason we're putting in an artificial turf field, so that we can get a lot more use out of it than we currently do, and that, I think, will happen if this moves forward. We took this March 15th to November 30th window, just as a sort of basic rubric for looking at the most likely time that people would be using the stadium. That's not to say that if someone wanted to use it off, you know, in the winter, that they could, that will be, you know, up for discussion. But we wanted to make sure that during the most, the time when most folks would be using the stadium or want to use the stadium, that we would have at least half of those days, if not more, available to the city. As I mentioned before, Bruce and his team expect to have somewhere between 20 and 30 games there, more if they're playoffs, and they'll have a prep day, prep day in advance of that. They expect to play their games, most like, most on Saturday, with some on Wednesdays as well. So, that leaves the rest of those time periods outside of that 24-hour window in the game day available for city youth. And we, again, would be allowing Hartford Sports Group to select those 40 dates upfront. They have to actually select them, I believe, in our current discussions by the end of the calendar year for the following year. At that point, there'll be a lengthy time period where we can book as much community use as we want within, within those dates that aren't being used by Hartford Sports Group. At some mutually determined time later in the season, if there are dates that aren't used, that neither the community users nor Hartford Sports Group has booked, and Hartford Sports Group wants to select additional dates, they'll have the right to do that at the city's discretion. The city will have approval rights on any of those sort of additional dates. And knowing that there'll be some community users that come in later in the season, to the extent dates are open, they'll be able to book those as they normally would. Again, noting, as I did in the, I think, the second to last slide, there will be some priority for HSG if they make the playoffs, or if they have some dates to make up due to rain. But otherwise, our goal is to make sure we can get as much community use during that regular season as we can, with options to do more if we want to.
So, in the presentation, it was mentioned that the Hartford Sports Group would at first be able to have access to 40 days, and then potentially perhaps add on to that 20, 20 additional days. And so, do we have a range equivalent in terms of numbers for, on the community side that you can provide us with?
So, we, a minimum of 131 dates, and that is the, basically, there's, I don't count my math exactly right, but it's 260 days approximately between March 15th and November 30th, so we put in that 131 date. Now, if the community only wants to use 60 of those dates, and we get to some point in the season, and HSG says, hey, we have an opportunity to bring in a collegiate soccer game, and no one else has booked that date, then the city will be able to say, yeah, you're an A to that. Is that helpful? Okay, go ahead.
One thing that's kind of, I think, is interesting is that our season ends after we make the playoffs in mid-October. So, there's a nice opportunity to stripe the fields at that point for football, and get some great games in, and of course, the Turkey Day game, which everybody, I think, is looking forward to a big turnout, and a lot of fun for that, which I think would be amazing for the city of Hartford.
The other question was in reference to the artificial turf. Has, have there been any concerns brought up with artificial turfs?
Kylie could handle this, but I'll take it, Kylie. This artificial turf is non-carcinogenic and fits with the zoning requirements of the city of Hartford. That means, actually, an expensive, it costs more money for the turf, but it's important for the safety of the kids, and we want a lot of kids playing on it, so that's what we're going with.
Thank you. Have there been any considerations in terms of development of Dillon Stadium and the connection to the river, just behind the train tracks? There's a really nice path there. I know a couple of folks in the room who ride their bikes and like to walk.
Sure, that's, I think, as we watch Coltsville develop, that's one of sort of the things I see as a next logical step, is reconnecting Coltsville, and there's an obvious place to do that, right around the stadium, to connect to Charter Oak Landing. And it's something we've talked with Riverfront Recapture about, as well as our friends in Coltsville and with iQuilt. So, as part of a broader development plan, that is something we're thinking about. There are iQuilt maps, Charter Oak Mile is something that they're talking about, and this would sort of be a nice logical part of that puzzle, is having that connection to Charter Oak Landing right around there. There's no immediate plans to do that with the funds we have here, but I do hope that that's something that we, that, just simply drawing people down to this area will help people reconnect with the waterfront again, and see that, how close everything is together, so.
The last question has to do with the timeframe, and it's open, whether it's to our attorneys, the city's attorneys, or Development Service, or whoever else would like to talk a little bit further about this. Sometimes we recognize that when development plans occur, it's a very long process, and there's a lot that takes, putting various connectors on the table and development and collaborations to occur. And so, one of the things that was brought up while, again, we were waiting outside, some folks were saying, oh, this is happening so quick. If someone from the city could just walk us through the timeframe that we're working with?
This is actually probably a better question for Mike and Bruce, but I'll briefly describe. So, as I mentioned, the process to get here involved us going to CRDA sometime in late summer, really, and then kicking off that RFP process. So, you're right, it's been about a six-month process from the time that RFP went out to where we are today. And that's just the time it took to review proposals, select proposals, and really go through this intense discussion process that we've had, both with the community and with our partners to get this together. From this point forward, the city has some work to do, like I said, in terms of talking about the booking process and the Community Use Fund and those sorts of pieces, while our friends at CRDA, and we also have some work to do in sort of actually getting all the agreements together, but while our friends at CRDA were really going to work on the brick-and-mortar construction process, so I'll let Mike talk about that. Simultaneously, Bruce and his team will be developing the soccer team and starting, and kicking off that process with USL. So, there'll be multiple processes moving forward from this point, with the goal of getting us to April 2019 kickoff.
First, a correction to Councilwoman Jennings. My finance guy, Ping Nain, tells me it's 3% if it's over 10 million, so I just lost 200,000, something like that. It's 10 million won, and I lost 200,000 yet. So, just for the record, it's 3% to go to your question. Here's, here's the anxiety. We've got to get this ready in a year. And there's a lot of complexity involved here. There's MDC issues, there are significant demolition issues, environmental issues, then there's the design, hiring of the construction managers, getting them in there, and getting it down before winter sets. This entire job is outside. It's not like closing in and working through the winter indoors. Honestly, if we don't kind of get started now, it's going to be hard to make next April. So, on the construction side, my, my staff has been working on the preparation of the bid documents, holding off advertising until the city comes to a decision. More fundamentally, the dollars authorized to be used for this project get triggered by you, the city, coming to an agreement. So, if you don't come to an agreement, we don't spend the money. So, that's kind of, puts us on hold until you make your decision with HSG. Once you make that decision, we start running. Right now, honestly, we're already building other projects for next year, we're already in the mix. So, that's a time, time concern on our end. On the operational side, we've got roughly about a year after you make your decision to put together the nitty-gritty of the operational plan for the facility, including hiring vendors, including the type of budget lines we'll need, the maintenance accounts, the equipment needs, and things of that nature. We'll work on that once you make your decision. So, that's for CRDA.
You know, the timeline is a great question, and we're really hoping that we can have some great communication with the council and with the public, and hopefully have a vote on April 9th. have a vote on April 9th. That's our goal. One of the main reasons is to, in order to build a team and get a team ready for next April, we need time to hire the right crew, in order to do the right branding, to hire, to get our sponsorships going. And just so the council knows, there are other teams in the league who've done it in 12 months and less. We have a friend in Las Vegas right now, Las Vegas Lights, Brett Lashbrook, who's, who did it in seven months. So it's doable, but he did not have the stadium component the way we do. And he did not live, he does not live in the Northeast, he's in Las Vegas. So this is our moment, really, council, this is our moment, to make this happen. We've been working on it for literally over two and a half years, as pushing, but, but really trying to do it in a deliberative way, and meeting with people, and talking about our ideas, and making some changes along the way. But really, this is the time. In order for us to play, late March, early April of 2019, we need to get rolling. So that's kind of the timing of it. Thank you for the question.
So with that, I'm going to give Councilman Gale an opportunity to ask some quick questions, because again, we need to be mindful of our timeframe tonight and the use of this facility. And I do want to get to public comment.
Thank you, Council President. So I get that this is a very, very different proposal than Dillon Stadium, than Dunkin' Donuts, that in this, in this model, the city owns the facility, the city has tremendous access to the facility, much differently than what happens over at Dunkin' Donuts. And I've, I've heard it said multiple times, and appreciate Councilwoman Bermudez's question about that community access and the number of dates. And so I understand that it will be available for our high schools, that it'll be available for our soccer teams, it'll be available for our football teams, it'll be available for our, our Hartford Wildcats, for instance, groups like that. What I'd like is a very specific example, because I've, I've heard back from some of these groups, that when we say it's available to them, they say, oh, yeah, but what's the cost? So could you speak to two very specific examples? If I'm Hartford High School, and I want to use that for football, what is going to be their cost to do so? And if I'm the Hartford Wildcats, and I want to use it to play games, what's going to be their cost?
So part of the answer to that question is challenging, because we don't know exactly what the, what the costs of operating the stadium are going to be. So what is it going to cost to run the lights, and what is it going to cost to run the scoreboard? Those are sorts of things, nuts and bolts, that we'll figure out as the stadium design is complete and constructed, so that we can put together a, a score schedule, or what's called a rate card, as it's described in the term sheet, so we can set up sort of an à la carte menu for folks if they want to just open the stadium for use. That cost will be very, very minimal. I can't give you an exact dollar figure right now, but I can tell you that our preliminary calculations had most of the community use costs falling below $500. And again, we have that $25,000 to help offset, be it school use or other types of use at our discretion. Again, it's, it will be similar to the way it works now, which is you pay a base fee, and then there's a small increase if you want to turn on the lights and that sort of thing. It will be the same thing here, we just need to figure out what, what is going to be the cost to actually run the lights, right? Or what is going to be the cost for that one stadium person just to come and unlock the door? So I can't give you an exact cost, but that's the, the plan. And as soon as we have a design and have some idea of what those expenditures look like, we're, we'd more than happy to come and sit down with Prak or Enersi or other regular users and talk to them about it.
Thank you. Second question, Mr. Mandell, you've spoken on behalf of HSG, but I understand that it's more than just you, that you have a couple of partners. And I don't know that most of the public knows who you are, and I think it might be important that we know who the three of you are, and what connection, if any, you have to the city of Hartford.
Thank you, Councilman. I guess, I'll try to speak for all three of us, but maybe you guys want to come up. So my two partners on this deal are Joe Calafiore and Scott Schooly. Joe has, runs a construction management company in Hartford, and has been there on Airport Road for over 40 years.
Hi, I'm Joe Calafiore, I'm Bruce's partner. I was born and raised in Hartford, in the South End, grew up in Hartford, very proud of that. My business has been in Hartford since 1968, and still remains on Airport Road. I used to come down here on my bicycle, and hop the fence, actually, nobody knows that, to watch the Hartford Knights play. And we've got some representatives over there, Italian-American Star Team, Tano's over there, and some of these other guys. They won the amateur national championship in that stadium in 1967 in front of, how many you say, Paulie? Eight, nine thousand?
How many, Peter? Three thousand.
Eight thousand, Peter, right? Peter was manager. And it was a great moment. We had a great league in Hartford, Italian-American Stars, we had the Hellenics, we had the Portuguese, Polish, all the different ethnic groups had teams that played at Dillon. And I remember that fondly. And I know the history of Dillon, because at Dillon, you had the Rolling Stones, the Grateful Dead. My sisters went to Buckley, I used to go watch the turkey game there every year. We had the jamboree with Penny High School in East Hartford. So that's me, that's what I am. I am Hartford. And I'll introduce my partner, Scott.
Hi, good evening. Scott Schooly, I've lived in Hartford, worked in Hartford since 1994. My kids have played and used sports in Hartford. We've been a longtime supporter of used sports in Hartford, Hartford used soccer, Little League. Most days, I don't leave the city of Hartford. I think it's important for me, not so much I really felt like I wanted to own a sports team, but I wanted to do something for the city. And this is a way to give back. This is my adopted hometown, I could live anywhere, I choose to live here, and I hope to make a difference with this project. Thank you.
Yeah, these are two great partners, and we're very proud to try to do something special here. I'm Bruce Mandell, I own a company called Datamail. It's in Newington in Windsor, Connecticut. We employ about 1,000 people. Over 350 of our employees are Hartford residents as of today. My family were originally from Newington, Connecticut, and grew up in this area, participating in everything that Hartford has to offer. Like Scott said, we never really dreamed of owning a sports team, that's not really something that was critical, but what was critical was trying to have an impact in Hartford, economically, socially, culturally, for the youth. And it's something the three of us in our lives have been doing for over 20 years. We believe in Hartford, we believe in the nonprofit system in Hartford, we like to give to it, we like to participate it, with it. That's our track record. And the idea that we've always, we grew up with is, if you're successful in business, then you give back to the community. And the idea here is to be successful on the field, and then give back to the community. It's that simple. And that's how we're going to judge ourselves and our success. So thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. So I have a few questions, and I know Majority Leader Concepcion has a few questions, but we're going to hold and pause here, because again, we want to get to public comment. And if we have time at the end, we'll, we'll circle back for our questions, and if there's any other parting questions. Before we get into the public comment agenda, I do want to acknowledge the principal of Sports Medical Science Academy here, Jose Colon. Again, stand up in the back there. Thank you. Thank you for opening the school up for this very critical public session. So without further ado, thank you to the administration and HSG group for your presentation. We will now open it up to public comment. We are going to give two minutes, because we really need to get through this, and we want to be able to hear from everyone, so I would just ask that people are mindful of their, their commentary, so we can kind of move through swiftly. This will not be the only opportunity, so keep that in mind as well. So first up, we have Hartford Soccer Club, Brian Gallagher, and Margaret Gerard.
How you doing? City Council, thank you. So we're actually here in support of this, this proposal. We've actually been working, or I personally have been working on this project for over two years. These guys reached out to me two years ago and bought me coffee, which really surprised me, because no one ever buys me coffee, and, and talked to me about how they could help soccer in Hartford and the youth, and how a pro team will affect us. And so I've been through this document up and down, we've been, we've had community meetings. This is something that could be really good for us. A big thing for us is access to community, which I think this really does. It's not just going to be a pro team, we're going to own the stadium, and we'll never get to use it. I mean, I'd still go to the games, if that's about it. Now we'll be able to use it. We've been, my mom and I have been running Hartford soccer for about 17 years now. And over that 17 years, we've barely ever used Dillon Stadium. One part because it's just been in such disrepair. I mean, I grew up playing here in Hartford, I'm from Hartford, and playing in Dillon Stadium, but in the last 15 years, it's just been awful to play on, so we haven't even bothered. And then also the cost was just too much. And so that's part of what we're looking for, is to be able to have access for our teams. And we have some of the best soccer teams in the state of Connecticut, that are all Hartford kids, from Hartford, playing on these fields. And we've made lots of improvements here in the city with our fields, with the three artificial turf fields, which has been wonderful, and the online system, which has helped out a lot in getting us fields and permits to use. But this is important, this is another step. And we have high caliber teams, and a lot of our games are outside Hartford, because we can't put together a place to play. So it's a big deal for us to be able to have Dillon Stadium to play.
Last thing I would say is, we're counting on the Hartford Sports Group, not just to have the venue and have the sports team, we need that, but to then pay back to the community by having them be involved with us and the community, and helping our youth. We need mentors, we need people who are doing it, who look like our kids, and we're hoping that will happen.
Thank you. Mary Sanders?
Good evening, my name is Mary Sanders, and I've been a resident of Hartford for about 23 years, in the South End all that time. And this is all new to me, I really don't know that much about it, so probably asked the intelligent questions, so I appreciated all the questions that the council members had for the, the presenters here. If you, like myself, are looking at this for the first time, obviously it's a lot to digest, so I was happy to hear you say that this decision is not going to be made anytime soon, that there'll be further meetings and more time for public comments, so people can come down. I guess what, pulled me down here, I saw a post by another young man in the audience, and it was talking about the money, you know, and how it's coming from the state with the strings attached, exactly as to how it has to be used. And having four grandkids in the Hartford, and that are playing basketball at a lot of the other parks around town, I'm saying, why can't some of that be used, you know, a little bit of it, to fix the basketball courts, and to do some of the, you know, make some other improvements in the, in, around town, instead of all concentrating it on Dillon? Although I, my grandson played there for Capital Prep, and I was totally horrified by the condition of the park and the bathroom, and so embarrassed for my grandson at, at his senior game last year. I'm, I'm really happy to see this happening, and I was going to ask who Hartford Sports Group is. I'm happy to hear they're, they're Hartford gentlemen, and, and they have a lot invested in this. I'm just wondering how many other bidders there were, since this, this group admits they've been working on this for over two years, and the city only went after money less than a year ago. So I'm wondering how all that was done, and what kind of process is going to be in place for the construction improvements? And I appreciated the question that was asked about apprenticeships and training programs for our Hartford youth, having two grandsons aged 19 and 20 that haven't been able to find work. So I think any, any bidders, especially minority bidders, that are willing to do apprenticeship programs should get extra points. I know I'm, you know, running out of time here, but I would be happy to be part of any kind of committee, looking at that thing, those kind of things in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Giovanni?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Frank Chanini, I'm the Athletic Director at Hartford Public High School, and I'm in support of this project, and in particular for high school athletics. If you look at our city currently, we don't have a venue to, to host a tournament football game, a tournament soccer game. To me, somebody that grew up in the South End, like Mr. Calafiore, and lived through a lot of these things here at Dillon Stadium, it's kind of an embarrassment, so I think we really need to push and get this project going. Just to give you a quick example, the last few tournament games that we've played in football, Hartford Public, Capital Prep, we didn't have a venue that we could play in Hartford. We had to go to Woodland, we had to go to Torrington, we had to go to Canton. So we really need something in Hartford for us, and, and so we can play these games and be at home, and have our fans support. Going and playing in Torrington, you're not going to get many people from Hartford at the games. Lastly, I want to move here to two, two more things. Schools like Sports Sciences, they need this venue, because it's their home field, and it's crucial for them, so I just wanted to put a plug for them. And then the last thing here is the fees. The fees have to be reasonable. We, we don't have a lot of money these days. And, you know, we can put, pay for some of the incidentals, like electricity and some other things, but they have to be within reason. I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Sam Gray? And please remember to state your name, organization you represent, or if you're a Hartford resident, your address, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sam Gray, I'm the President and CEO of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Hartford. I represent over 10,000 young people that have the opportunity to call a Boys and Girls Club their second home. I can say personally, I've known of the Mandell family and the Hartford Sports Groups very intimately, in a sense that it's provided hope and opportunity through the game of soccer, and exposing kids to the game of footsaw on a daily basis. But even deeper than that, when you look at the young people, the young men, and the mentors that actually do the programs, soccer, footsaw, with the young people, they look like them. And that's very important in our communities. And I can say that the, the, the love and the passion that Bruce has and his partners have for this, this opportunity is tremendous. And we continue to look forward to them, continue to support the many kids that walk through the doors of a Boys and Girls Club. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Connie Williams? And then next, we'll have Paul Guglio.
Hi there, my name is Connie Williams, and I'm a Hartford resident for the last 35 years, and thank you very much to the council for your great questions. I just wanted to, in addition to the great things that other people have, have pointed out, I wanted to bring two other points out. I'd really, I'm a big supporter of this initiative, and I really, really think that Hartford needs the kind of professional soccer opportunity here, that's going to bring some economic benefits to the city, bring people out from the suburbs to come in to see games. Soccer is such a growing, growing sport, and my kids grew up in Hartford, they played youth soccer, they played youth baseball. I mean, if we only had the Dillon Stadium opportunity, you know, when my kids were little, I, I think it would have been fantastic. So Hartford needs Dillon, Hartford needs the stadium and the infrastructure here where we can sponsor these kinds of things, and we need the professional soccer. Again, no one's talked about the economic development opportunities from bringing professional sports, yet another sports team into Hartford. And with the success of the Yard Goats, I think we have to really recognize that that's going to be a terrific thing. In addition, I'd really like to say that the Hartford Sports Group is made up of, of three fantastic professionals. I've known two of these gentlemen for over two decades, and I can only say that they bring wonderful expertise, and professionalism, and integrity to, to this initiative. So I'd just like to say, I'm a big supporter of- So I'd just like to say, I'm a big supporter of this. We need that kind of expertise to do the right job with the stadium and with the sports opportunities, and I'm a big supporter of that. And I hope the Hartford City Council will make a swift and right, the right decision to support this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Paul from Farmingdale Road.
Good evening. My name is Paul Guglio. I was born and raised in Hartford, went to Hartford schools. My family owned restaurants in downtown Hartford for over 30 years. As a child, I played at Dillon Stadium soccer, with actually the Italian-American Stars mini-kickers program that they had. In high school, I played Dillon Stadium for South Catholic. Council members asked questions about Hartford residents and jobs and et cetera. You have Hartford residents developing this. This is their neighborhood, their city, their town, their children, their grandchildren, at a zero cost to the city of Hartford and the taxpayers. I hate to say this, but this would really be foolish to let this slip through the city's hands. This is nothing but a win-win for everybody, the city, the neighborhoods, and the kids, most importantly. Please, don't let this slip through your hands, guys. We've seen it happen too many times in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Downs, and then we'll have Anthony Blanco.
Okay, I'm Michael Downs. I'm a resident at 74 Rosemont Street in Hartford. I've been in Hartford for over 40 years. And I've lived in the area all my life, was born in Hartford. The thing I'm concerned about is not the other schools, but Sports and Medical Sciences Academy, this is their home field, it was their home field, and they, what are their soccer and football teams going to be using, or how can they schedule during September and October, when the soccer team is just finishing up? Another question I would have is the unions. Being a union leader, I'm president of the Hartford Federation Subsuit Teachers, I am concerned that the whole construction job should be unionized, completely unioned, and all of the workers after the construction is over should be unioned. I know the union at the Coliseum downtown, and they should be unionized out at the Dunkin' Donuts. And I'm also very interested in the connection to the Connecticut River. It's a very beautiful river and some nice paths and jogging areas, as the councilwoman mentioned. And also, it's time the state of Connecticut to start paying back to the city. They have ripped us, ripped our school system out, taken away everything in the school system, took away our vocational technical education especially, so a lot of our kids aren't prepared to take some of the jobs, so they have to be trained. And so we have to, I'm glad the state is finally learning to pay back after doing what they did to our school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Blanco, and then Andre Murray.
Thank you, Council President. It's great. I'm very excited for them coming in and developing that eyesore, because it became from a landmark to a eyesore. Now it's coming a landmark again, so I'm very excited. He loves boxing. I own a boxing gym and I host shows for kids throughout the city, so I'm looking to bring boxing to the Dillon Stadium and pack the place up with all the kids. So I'm really excited, and he's a great guy, and I can't wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Andre Murray, and then Leslie Hammond.
Thank you, guys. My name's Andre Murray. I'm Vice President of the Hartford Premier Development Soccer League, just started last summer. Worked closely with Brian Gallagher and his mom with Hartford Soccer Group, over 200 kids, and I support this program because it would be a great opportunity for these kids in Hartford to finally get a chance to see a professional soccer team, and someday could idolize these players in the future. So I'm all support for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Hammond, and then Hill from Regent Street.
Hi, Leslie Hammond, One London Place. Thank you so much for doing this and the transparency. I do wish that we had time for more public meetings, because I think there's a lot of people that are just hearing about it now, and I know we're, you know, have a deadline, so... But I do appreciate that you have tried to be more transparent, given some of our past history with Dillon. One of my confusions is the $10 million with CRDA. My understanding with CRDA grants is that they're always paid back by, you know, the apartment owners and different people that have used them. So is this definitely a gift to us from the state of Connecticut, and we are not going to be paying that $10 million back? That is like, awesome.
You can ask, you can answer the question.
It's grand.
So it's green here.
So don't tell the rest of the residents of the state of Connecticut, okay? They're already a little mad at us. And just about the money, because money is really important, the $300,000 rent, I presume that that number came up from the management fee that Spectra is charging us, and that there's a spreadsheet about all those numbers that somebody has, that all those numbers have been looked at, because I haven't seen anything about that, so I hope the council has. And we're responsible for insurance costs, so I don't know what that might be, and I presume the team would have their own insurance, that would make sense. But I'm just really, really like you all, thinking a lot about the money, not being blindsided and surprised with any of the money. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I think this is Artie or Marty Hill from Regent? Okay. And then Tom O'Connell will be next.
Good evening. My name is Artasina Hill, current resident of Hartford for four years, and current PTO President of Swart Medical Sciences Academy for the last two years. I, first of all, let me say that I am all for any type of renovation and improvement of Dillon Stadium. It is an embarrassment to go to area cities with our schools and see their lovely facilities and be able to use their bathrooms, and then we host games here and they use a porta potty. So I'm all for improvement. But I do, I am very concerned about the vocabulary of anticipated use of... I really do hope, and I'm putting my faith in the city, that you do have the community in mind. And one of my questions is, who are the main users of the stadium currently in its dilapidated space? Currently, SMSA has been making do and has been very happy to use it. But to me, a partnership means that there is mutual beneficial give and take, and we are happy to host this meeting here. We love having people come to our lovely building, but we don't see a dime with that. If there is a rental facility used for people to come to this building, they may pay Hartford City Schools, but it doesn't come to this school, so we have to pay for the light bills. We have to pay for the electricity. We pay for, you know, everything to host something here. But to me, a courtesy would be that if we wanted to use, if it was a partnership, if we wanted to use something that next door, that it wouldn't be an extravagant cost for the schools to be able to use that, because that's simply money that we do not have, because we're seeing money from the city stay at the same level year after year, but the costs of running a school increase. So I'm hoping that we will be able to have a partnership that's beneficial to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom O'Connell, and then Harry. Oh, Harry? So I'm not sure if Tom is still here. So we'll come, we'll come back after you speak.
Hello, my name's Harry Belucci. I am a Hartford teacher for the past 35 years, a Hartford football coach for the past 38 years. I started in college. I'm a former Hartford resident. I grew up in Rice Heights. Most people don't even know where that is, or where it was, in the South End of Hartford. And I remember coming down here when I was in sixth grade and hopping over the fence. I didn't have 50 cents to get in, and watching all those great Hartford Weaver football games, growing up in Les Black and Les Canada and all these great players. And then I got an opportunity to play here when I played at Buckley, and then I got an opportunity to coach here in a Thanksgiving Day game, and it was some of the greatest memories I'll ever have. Now, what I'll say to the council is, and you name the city, and I'll tell you, Bridgeport, New Haven, Stamford, Meriden, every single one of them have a stadium for their football teams, a turf field. The only one that does not is guess who? And our kids deserve that. We've been playing Hartford Weaver games now behind schools, and, you know, the crowd's big, and we need a stadium for this. We need a place where our kids can be proud of, that they're going to remember that I played at Dillon Stadium, because their fathers, their grandfathers have played games there, and then they'll play games there, and they all have something in common. And I just want to say that we've waited long enough, and I think it's time for us and our kids to have a place to play where they can stick their chest out and say, that's Dillon Stadium. And I'll say this, as I am the Chairman of the Connecticut High School Coaches Association Football Committee to the CIAC, and at the next meeting, it's the first thing I will bring up, is we need to play a state championship game at Dillon Stadium. And if I can get that done, I will. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll circle back to Tom O'Connell. Okay, moving on, Nick from West Hartford, and then Andrew Long.
Hi, my name is Nick Ballisberry from West Hartford. I've been coaching soccer for over 10 years. I've got players who play professionally in MLS. I know the business of soccer. My concern is risk of City of Hartford. You know, HSG projects to outperform attendance of the Wolf Pack, Men's Ice Hockey of UConn, and Yard Goats with a stadium that needs to be renovated. What's the minimum to renovate Dillon Stadium to the city? Is it 10 million? Is it 2 million? The city can still get community use out of Dillon Stadium without using all the bond money. That money can then be dispersed to other neighborhoods. Some other issues I see with the deal, we're giving the naming rights to HSG, whereas Serta collects naming rights for XL Center and Brentford Field, they collect parking revenue from Brentford Field and from XL Events. We are giving money to a private business at the expense of the City of Hartford. Why can't the City of Hartford collect these potential revenues? This limits the city, provides exposure. As a contingency, if HSG isn't successful, they have the opportunity to sell the rights to the stadium, or excuse me. On the last page of the partnership, it talks about right of first offer and sale and private development. I believe the Dillon asset was entrusted to the city. I wasn't aware the city could sell that asset to a private organization. I would hope it always remains for the city and for the community. That's all.
Andrew Long? No, Andrew Long? Okay, we'll come back. Len Ferrari? I know I saw Len here. Did she leave? Okay. Alyssa Peterson?
Good evening, Council. Alyssa Peterson. I'd like to comment specifically on the bond deal. I really don't care for this project, and I apologize to the audience. We've never had time to air our thoughts on the bond deal publicly. And my concern is that it's $10 million absurd of funds that I believe could be spent elsewhere in the city of Hartford. If you look at our legislature, we probably have until November, when there's a change in the legislature and a change at the governor level possibly. I don't believe we're going to have these Serta funds around for a very long time, and I believe the Serta funds could have gone maybe 1.5 million matching with, I know we had a private investment offered for a total of 3 million to redo Dillon. That would have been sufficient according to Serta documents and according to other documents. And that money could have gone elsewhere in the North End, elsewhere in Hartford to spend on projects. So again, I think it's, this body hasn't had a chance to look at this. HSG, I'm sorry, is not putting in any dollars into the project. They're putting into their own private entity. If you go back and circle around, two years ago, Mayor Bronin had a meeting and we learned that Dillon would cost one, between 1 and 1.3 million to repair. We all saw the drawings, I have a copy of those drawings. We had a private investor offer 1.5. If we did matching 1.5 or 1.7 with the Serta funds, I think that's enough, that's sufficient. I don't think that the reason that the state was given was accurate or honest about these bond funds, the necessity for them, and going forward, I think that's going to be an issue. And finally, I'd like to draw your attention and the public's attention, I don't believe this item should have been on your agenda. You received a letter about a terrible conflict of interest with our mayor, and it's your role and your responsibility to postpone the item until you get an answer for the public about that terrible conflict of interest he has in doing this deal. And I'm sorry to be the naysayer, but I'd like to just remind folks that I was one of the people that wasn't very popular with the Dunkin' Donuts Stadium. And what did we say on that? The pro forma wasn't sufficient, the eminent domain was wrong, the numbers didn't work, the builder was, the wrong builder, the development should not have been linked with a stadium. Every single point we brought to the public, we were right on. And Councilwoman Bermudas, you of all people would know that, you were right there fighting that battle. So again, I'm sorry to be the naysayer here, but I believe the deal with Serta bonds should have been looked at more closely, where they're going, what they're being spent on, and how they're being spent. And I believe that this is a rush to judgment here, and it's unfortunate. I certainly support redoing Dillon, but just not for this kind of money. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kurt Cameron, and then Larry Dooley.
Hi, my name's Kurt Cameron. I'm with the Thomas Hooker Brewing Company. As many of you know, we have been trying to come back to Hartford for some time. We were fortunate enough last July to actually open up a new location in Hartford, as a matter of fact, at the Colt Building. A lot of people said we were crazy for investing in this part of the city. I'm happy to say they were wrong. I want to say thank you to the Hartford Sports Group for also stepping up and investing. And the idea that they're not investing any money in this part of the city, I think is completely wrong, because I know that the numbers that they're putting out of pocket to make this happen is considerable. I think you can play games with how they're investing the money, but at the end of the day, they're putting millions of their own money into this deal. So don't let anybody fool you. These guys are committed, they're from Hartford, and they believe in this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry Dooley, and then Phyllis Arias.
Hello, I'm Larry Dooley. I am the developer of Colt Gateway. Obviously, we have a vested interest in this, as Dillon Stadium is right next door to our property. I went through the earlier debacle, and for once, I'm not on the hot seat, so I'm happy with the council. But we went through the earlier debacle that happened with the stadium, we know how that landed. Bruce mentioned something about a moment in time. And, you know, at Colt Gateway, there was a moment in time. It was 2010, and you had a guy, and that was me, who was local, born at Hartford Hospital, lived in Hartford, worked in Hartford. You had the Capitol. Chevron was my partner. We now have United Bank into the deal, the state helped, the city helped, everybody helped. This is a moment in time. I can tell you right now, I've seen it, I know it. You've got the right guys, they're local, they care. You've got the Capitol in CRDA, you've got Mike Freemuth behind it. You couldn't have a better guy behind any deal that you ever have, I can tell you that for sure. So I just, I just look at it as, I can't understand how anybody could see anything but that this is the moment for Dillon Stadium. I have been... I have been watching, I have been looking out the window of Colt Gateway and seeing Dillon Stadium just languish. My son played football there, I used to go there back in the day. And just, I didn't go to the Dead Concert, by the way. But it, it, it's been a really tough thing to watch that. And my, my investor partner Chevron is going to be at, at Colt actually on Wednesday looking at things. And I would love to be able to tell them that something's going to happen with Dillon. Because when they look out and see that, I can tell you since Mayor Bronin has been in office, it's been better. You know, you've, you've tried to improve it a little bit, make it look a little better, but it's been rough. So what it needs, it needs capital, it needs CRDA, and it needs these guys to do the deal. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Phyllis Aries? Hyacinth Yenney? And then Art Feltman?
Good evening, everyone. Well, we have something here, it seems. I mean, I haven't been in much of these meetings to hear what's going on, but after listening to what's happening this evening, I am very hopeful that something good is about to happen to us. And it's that soccer field. I mean, yeah, I, I did not support that baseball field because I, I know we were going to pay for the rest of our lives for that. But I know that we are not going to pay for the rest of our lives for this soccer field. And that place has been in bad condition for years. And you know, we're in a historical district. And if we cannot find someone that can put this thing together, you know, we are very good at planning and planning and planning to death and nothing happens. We need to get our act together. You all need to make sure all the i's and the t's and everything is crossed to make sure at the end of the day, we don't end up holding that bag with nothing in it, okay? We want to make sure this is going to be a good deal for all of us. I like the fact that these guys are Hartford people and we know where to find them, right? So, I don't think we can go too wrong. We just make sure that all our kids have an opportunity to use this stadium. Make sure everything is written down, that we can use that stadium for our children in this city. Because let's face it, none of our field in Hartford are any good, all right? And we've patched and we've patched and nothing is ever good. So we need a turf field, okay? Just like we need Hartford High turf field so we can play football there, all right? So, I will support it until something go wrong, then I'll tell you you do something wrong, all right? So, good luck and let's not think, let's not have this thing run out for another year. Let's get moving in this good deal, I think. Thank you.
Art Feltman?
Hyacinth's a hard act to follow. I'm Art Feltman, Director of International Hartford here in Hartford. And we've tried to present to the city council for many years, the global perspective, that there's more than people here than just people who grew up in North America. The people who here, over a fifth of the city's population comes from South America, comes from Africa, comes from Europe, comes from other parts of the Southern Hemisphere. And in all these parts of the world, more so than baseball, soccer is the number one sport. It's the number one, number two, number three sport in all these countries. And people are wild about it. And we have a soccer stadium here in Hartford. You're going to find that the immigrant population and the refugee population of the city and their children are going to really use this stadium. And they're going to watch the games and it's going to be tremendously successful. And then all the immigrant population, from 128,000 of them from throughout the region, are going to come into Hartford to participate in these games and at this field. So I hope, I'm speaking on my own behalf, not the organizations, but I hope myself that at your next council meeting, you'll approve this proposal. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. So that was our last speaker, so that concludes the public comment portion. We have a few more minutes, so if there are any last parting questions that I, I know there was a couple. And I, I think Kylie wanted to pos- Okay, because there may be some, addressing some of the comments that were already made. So if we can be brief and wrapping up kind of parting questions, because I have some questions still and I know minority leader conception does as well. So, majority leader, sorry. Councilman Deutsch.
Thank you. One or two of the speakers made, made me, I wouldn't say uncomfortable, but, but I'd just like to be reassured of this. The, um, the city of Hartford will be the Dillon Stadium owner. The agency paying for it is the state, basically. And there's a bonding mechanism, but can, can someone reassure me that there's no way in the future that someone, a certain different city council or a mayor or someone like the current president might not want to sell it as an asset or privatize it in order to either raise funds or take it beyond city control and have elements of privatization without ownership by the people of the city of Hartford? Is that written in stone, so to speak?
Corporation Council asked a question.
Councilman Deutsch, I know what the term sheet says, but a, a previous speaker did mention that this is held in a trust from the Colt family. And so there is no prospect that I can see that in the future, the stadium can be sold legally by the city.
Thank you. Thank you for that reassurance.
Councilwoman Jennings? Brief question?
Well, one question I had was in the wintertime, since it doesn't look like there's going to be much use, can, um, can it be used as an ice skating rink? And the other thing that I wanted to say, oh, thank you, Mr. Freemuth for clarifying the amount of money that Serta was going to receive. And also that, um, we are very serious, no, the council hasn't really made a statement about it, but we are very serious about seeing our people in the city of Hartford be employed and have a process whereby, similar to the Yard Goats, they had the, um, the, the application process at the Y on Albany Avenue. I mean, someplace locally where we can actually know that all our people are going to have an equal opportunity to go someplace and actually be hired. And if there are requirements for the union, that all the schools receive the requirements as well as all the community-based agencies so that we can send the proper people for employment. Thank you. And thank you for the presentations. I think they were excellent. I love what you all are doing for the young people and I appreciate your time.
Councilman Sanchez?
I'm just curious, in the, in the plans, is there any new technology, you know, an example of solar to help offset the cost to the city as well as yourselves?
Howard, what happened? We thought you were going to answer the question.
Howard, where did you go? The plans are being developed now and, um, Councilman Sanchez, all the new technologies are being reviewed. But we're really in the planning stage now and obviously, from an environmental standpoint and from a cost standpoint, anything we can do to stay ahead of the curve, I'm sure the CRDA and the city and us will be looking at that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I, I have a few questions and I, I want to back up a little bit. And I think perhaps it's addressed, my first question perhaps is addressed to you, Mike. Because, you know, as Kylie presented, this has been six months in the making and I believe there were three proposals through the initial RFP that we did. So I, I just want to understand, to some extent of the three proposals, why HSG versus the other two?
Sure. We, um, just a little history, how Serta got involved. We actually were approached to do soccer in Rensselaer Field by several professional teams. Frankly, the math to turn the keys on at Rensselaer, because it's such a large facility, was prohibitive for anybody to make any kind of business run on it. So the question always came out of that, well, can we use Dillon? And it was a question we couldn't answer. And as we heard and learned of others interested, we put a question to the mayor last summer, just to that effect. Is there any way we can help you raise the question? So the mayor discussed it with our board and asked that we take the lead and put out a request for proposals. And we did that in September. We conducted a public hearing in the fall. We had about six weeks of staff analysis and board review. We had a selection committee. There were three proposals. First one, no, no particular order, was from Hartford City FC. This was actually a relocation from New Britain of a semi-professional team. Their management proposal was that they would commit about $600,000 in funds into the stadium. And they wanted to use it for 30 days over 15 years. And their payment, the rental fee, was $1 per year. I'm sorry, $1 per day. They mentioned the possibility of going to a higher league, but that higher league had raised questions in our minds as to its viability. And that was the NASL, which has been up and down and now down to seven teams. So it's a league that has its own issues separate and distinct from the proposal. We had another proposal from Civic Mind. That essentially was, in our mind, a planning exercise. It talked about reusing the stadium, it talked about raising some private funds. It suggested that they could raise one and a half million for an initial phase. Honestly, we did not believe one and a half million, or for that matter, the 600,000 that was suggested by the other bidder was sufficient to even get to the questions of the repairs and needs at the stadium. A field alone, as a grass field, is several hundred thousands of dollars. An artificial field is over 1.2. So you get an idea of the scope, that's not even getting into ADA issues. The bleachers, the west end bleachers, the west side bleachers, frankly, they're, they have to be taken down. The replacement is over $600,000 by themselves. The bathrooms, the facilities are completely destroyed. They have to all be rebooted. There's several million dollars just putting in ADA compliant bathrooms. So we thought that the investments, while yes, they would help and yes, they would make some improvements, they really wouldn't get to the core issue, they really wouldn't make the building survive. And we didn't believe it had a long-term viability. The third proposal was from HSG. Their initial proposal was to, uh, for us to invest 12 million to 13 million in the stadium. And they were going to pay rent about 125,000. We went through an analysis of ourselves. Someone mentioned earlier this evening that we had come up with a $3 million. That's to bring it to a scholastic standard. To bring it to a semi-pro collegiate standard was north of six and a half, seven million. And then you could go up from there. You could, you can invest as much money as you ever want to invest. But that was the two benchmarks. About three to simply restore it for a scholastic, about six to get some kind of activity in a building that helps sustain its operations. The negotiations then went to the city. We suggested to negotiate with HSG. That's when the city's team sat down with HSG and banged out the deal you currently have before you. The one caveat is in the capital funds. That is coming out of a pot of money we call the neighborhood allocation. That is about a $40 million allocation to the entire city of Hartford, to any neighborhood. This is 10 million of that. However, we identify it in three ways. The six, the six and a half million that we believe is critical to get it to a professional level is to be sustained by the forecast of admission taxes to the state that justifies the underwriting of bonds of roughly $6 million. We could not, and we did not push the pro formas beyond that. We didn't believe they were that possible. We were more conservative. We took their forecasting, we adjusted it downward of attendance and ticket prices. And from that, we forecasted admission taxes. And from that, we forecasted how much capacity would push the ability to bond. That gave us the $6 million. That was roughly consistent with what we thought was a fair investment in the building, and hence the math. The city and others, but primarily the city, asked us to put an artificial field in. The team did not want that, the league is very happy without it. But reality is, the artificial surface will give you those multiple community uses. The field will not have to worry about resting and recuperating. It'll be used continuously and it will give us a longer season. That's an additional million, million and a half that was a request of the city to upgrade the building to go the extra distance, to go the artificial surface. Inside of that math, we have one replacement of the field. Depending on wear and tear, anywhere from seven to 10 years, maybe more. There is one replacement purchase. So that if the, if the world changes in five years from now, we're wondering what's happening with the field, we have a reserve built in for the field. We are also building into our budget a reserve for capital expenditures when things break and need addressing. Lastly, we thought, from all our reading of what's going on in that neighborhood, that some funds should go into Colt, hence the $10 million forecast. We think that improvements to playing fields at Colt will take some of the pressure off of folks wanting to use Dillon, frankly. It will extend and improve the neighborhood and it will help us get to larger issue of rebuilding the area around the Colt Armories and, and other parts of the neighborhood, which are coming online and getting investments by us and others as part of the National Park Service. So it was our recommendation to go with HSG. We thought it was sustainable. We thought it was a business program. We thought it was local investors. We thought it was reasonable of an investment. We thought the other ones, while solid in where they were, they weren't sufficient to get it to the final distance. That we were by ourselves halfway into a problem. We know that just last week, we got sideswiped by an MDC issue that no one knew about. So now we get to budget that. But thankfully, I lowered my fees from 5% to 3% this evening and we can handle that. So, but the point of matter is, and others have said it and you can know it, I just noticed this evening driving down here, there's not even a sidewalk in front of that building. And, you know, now I got to figure out how to pay the first sidewalk. But I think those are the kind of things that are going to pop, that you need a reserve for. Look, the Civic Mind proposal, you can plan, you can plan. Someone said it better than me, you can plan on that one. The Hartford City FC, we didn't think there was sustainability in the, in the format of their league or their team to continue the investment that was necessary. However much support they had, I have a little guilt about New Britain sending teams to Hartford. So that played in the back of my mind.
Yeah, I don't think we want to do that.
Yeah, I don't think we want to do it twice. But I think realistically, this is a proposal of Hartford guys wanting to invest in Hartford. The neighborhood money was set up, it's been stretched into the park. Could you do other things with the money? Yeah, you could. Are they ready to go? I don't think so. I see these projects every single day. We got a short window, a real short window. I don't mean just before the league needs to make a decision and we need to get to construction. Someone else mentioned the ability of, to bond, the ability to get funds could get harder in the next year. We got an opportunity, it's been said by others much better than I. So our proposal was, listen, let's go for it. We think HSG, you can put together a deal you're comfortable with, they're willing to operate the building, keep the cost to the city minimal, get the building upgraded and something that we can all be proud of.
Thank you for that. You can stay right there because I think, you're on the hot seat, Mike, sorry. So, thank you for that, that context and history that, that, I think that's very important for people to understand kind of where we were and how we got here and the thought process by which we landed on this recommendation from CDRA and the administration, if you will. So with that, I think it's important too to understand, you know, the pot of neighborhood money to some extent that has been, you know, allocated to, or earmarked, I should say, to the city via CDRA. But recognizing that, you know, annually, monthly, as opportunities come, we still have to go to the state of Connecticut and to the Bond Commission to draw down those funds to actually do something, correct? But I think it's important to understand that, and it's my understanding, you know, say in the last year and a half, we have a sizable amount of projects that are underway, that we have funded throughout the city. But predominantly, you know, I'm looking at a list here now, you know, 5 million to Bowles Park for the, the renovation of that housing development project. Bracket Knoll, which is another housing development project over on Nagata. Bracket Knoll, which is another housing development project over on Nagata, near Parker Memorial Recreation Center. And then the Swift Factory, which is on Five Corners in the heart of the north and on Westland Street, $4.3 million for turning that into a food and job creation hub. And then I see $525,000 for high-speed internet cabling connection to north end businesses. So these are, you know, a few projects that I'm aware of that have come online in the last year and a half and are kind of like underway or getting under, or getting off the ground, if you will, for a total of about $11.3 million. So we have been making investments with these neighborhood funds across the city, if you will. So the whole notion of, you know, yes, these are limited funds, it's going to get harder, but we have been doing a lot of development investment across the city. So I just wanted to make that point, and I don't know if you want to add anything or if I was misstated in saying anything. I'm just going off of kind of the information that I have.
No, it's a fair question. The neighborhood monies aren't always understood. I have an update for the council. Could you just give them? But your numbers are actually pretty much on point. About 11 million has been allocated, shy, 10 goes into this project. It leaves you roughly half the allocation. The neighborhood monies, so you understand, they are bonded funds. They do go through CRDA, but the protocol is that the city sends us the projects for neighborhood programs. So we only work on what the city sends us, and we don't initiate quote-unquote "projects." We do in the downtown. That's a different program. That's primarily housing, and that's focused exclusively in the downtown core. But on the neighborhood projects, they come up from the neighborhoods, they go through City Hall somehow, and they find their way to us. On our end, there are several criteria that we apply. They generally have to be in infrastructure, in economic development, or housing. We don't generally get into other types of initiatives, so you have to keep those points in mind. The objective, the statutory objective of CRDA is to grow the tax base and grow the revenue streams to the city, as well as increase job activity. So those are the kind of threshold questions that we wrestle with. Once a project reaches us, it doesn't mean we'll fund it. It means we'll get into the nitty-gritty of trying to understand it and underwrite it, and then allocate the appropriate funds. Then, like everybody else, we go to the Bond Commission and hope for the best. There's no guarantees there either, so.
Thank you. So I think I have one or two more questions for you. So, you know, there was, I think, some comments with regard to risk, right? And risk to the city. And I know a big goal of this development was minimum risk to the city with regard to expenses and cost, given our fiscal situation and past lessons learned, if you will, from previous projects. So I'm curious to hear from your perspective, Mr. Freeman, what happens? I guess what assurances or triggers are there within this agreement that, say, if, you know, HSG went abus, or say, the league went abus, right? Because you referenced the, another proposal that you reviewed through the RFP process and the NASL league, right? Which was kind of like fluctuated and kind of like was, had a lot of teams and a lot of, then not so many, and we know that some of these leagues are very fragile and kind of, you know, a high one day and then the next day they're not. So, you know, my understanding is that this, you know, league that HSG is buying into is a pretty, you know, has a good record, and is a strong league, but I'm just curious to understand what happens in the event that, you know, the league goes abus and HSG can't pay their lease agreements to the city, or kind of what happens at that point?
You have a beautiful, brand-new ballpark. Look, honestly, I can't, I'd be better for Bruce to speak to it than to me and the league. But yeah, there is that risk. And at that point, the worst you come out of it is a renovated Dillon. How much you want to invest in it, how much you want to operate it, what you want to do with it, it's going to default back to you. That's just the reality. I think the USL is the strongest of any of these leagues, save the professional, the major league one, which is with the New England Revolution plays and teams like that. The USL has been growing. Their teams have been increasing in value, and their, actually, their attendance is going up as well. So it's the positive of all these leagues. It is probably the recognition and, again, where's Bruce?
Right here.
Jesus, Bruce. This, this, the issue here is, you know, yes, there's risk. There's less risk with this bet than the other two, okay? There's less risk with this league than the other two leagues. There is a solid foundation in about 30 different towns being put together. Now, some teams come and go. You always have those issues. Some go into hiatus, some basically lose their affiliation. But, you know, that is, that is the ultimate question. If it doesn't happen, and the team, for whatever reasons, isn't here in three years, or six years, or nine years, you have a much nicer-looking Dillon Stadium than you do this afternoon, which is still available for community use and still available for, you know, scholastic and other activities. The issue you'll face, then, is how to operate it. The thing that's being brought to the table with this deal is you don't have to worry about the operations as long as they're in there succeeding, which is why we want them to succeed. We want to give them the right building. We want to give them the right deal, so that they can make the right bet to eliminate as much risk as possible. And look, there's no guarantees in this business. We wrestle it every day, so. But Bruce, that's perfect, Bruce says.
Thank you. So Bruce, if you, I think there was some commentary in the public comment, and, you know, recognizing that this is a public-private partnership, and I think, you know, what has been widely shared is the investment that the state is making via this new stadium. So if you can give, you know, the public the benefit of understanding what your investment is from, you know, quantifying that in a dollar's perspective, because it's my understanding, you know, that it's a one-to-one ratio, and leveraging dollar-for-dollar, if you will. So if you can shed some light on that.
Sure. So the key costs to building a team are, one, the franchise fee, which is multiple millions of dollars, and, two, really putting together a team and the ramp-up time to do that. The third thing is having enough capital so that in the first couple of years, you can ensure success. Altogether, we estimate between $7.5 and $10 million of initial investment, and then an ongoing budget of close to $5 million a year, which will go towards paying for our players and our front office, as well as other expenses.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I think this last question is for Mike again. So assuming that, or say, the council, you know, approves this, and, you know, now we're essentially handing the contractual and kind of all those mechanisms or what have you to get the deal over to CDRA to act in our place, if you will, to do those negotiations or what have you. Can you just explain that process? And what are kind of, you know, the, that vetting process to ensure that HSG is, you know, in financially good health, and, you know, that they actually, you know, have the option or seal the deal with the club or what have you before signing agreement? You can just walk through that?
Yeah, I think those are fair points. I think over the next 30 days, 45 days, we're going to be in lawyer shops with Howard and whatever council the city retains, our council and those of the team. There will need to be assurances from the league of the establishment of the team, that its fees have been paid, and it's in good standing. Also, on our end, we are not going to operate the building unless that money is deposited upfront into an escrow account, which we didn't draw on to operate the facility. We don't have the funds either. So, I mean, for construction, but for operation, it's on them. So that'll be critical inside the dilemma of putting together these documents, is how to prove all that, and that's what we'll be entertaining over the next 45 days.
Thank you. Do my colleagues have any other party question? Councilman Jennings?
Yes. What are the ticket prices, number one? And number two, can people who are, can, 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 can community groups that give games, that, that host games and things, can they charge ticket prices so that they can make the money up to pay for, you know, offset the cost of their games?
I'll do the ticket prices for the, for our team. Those aren't set yet, but we're projecting an average cost of around $20 a ticket. That will probably range from, anywhere from a low of 12 to 14, all the way up into some premier seats. And also, there will be opportunities for volunteers to work and to help out at the stadium, and I think that Kylie may want to talk about, yep.
And community users can charge for their own events. And just to, I think there-
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Yes, community users could charge a ticket price if they wanted, you know, to offset their costs. And again, to build on that, the question came up regarding school use and cost for that. The city is in no way, shape, or form trying to make money off of this, so whatever the user fee is, is really only going to reflect the actual cost to operate. In other words, the actual time for someone to open the door, again, the light and scoreboard and that sort of thing. So those costs, once we know them, will be set, but they're, they should just be for actual costs. And then, again, we have that community fund to help offset that.
Thank you. Councilman Sanchez?
This is a question for Kylie. So just to follow up on that, the funds that will be raised will offset costs for, for example, BPW?
No, the cost will be used, well, we can decide, the community is, the city as a whole can decide how we want to use that $25,000 fund. So for example, we decide, we want to set aside X amount out of that to offset Hartford Public Schools, so that they don't have to pay a fee, or they pay a reduced fee, or we want to set aside a set amount for Hartford-specific youth groups to play. We get to decide how we want to apply that. Anybody using the stadium and going through that special events process will pay for whatever city services may be required to assist. So again, police costs and that sort of thing will be covered in that normal process, as you're all familiar with.
Thank you.
Councilman Clark?
I wasn't done.
Oh, okay.
I just want to share that, how excited I am about this, you know, venture that we'll most likely go into. I believe this is one of the most favorable proposals that the city has received. You know, we retain the ownership of the park. The community retains a high percentage of the usage of the park. Most likely, you know, so far, it's no calls to the city. And I must say that the Harper Sports Group, when they give back to the community, is quite impressive. So I'm very much in favor of this and looking forward to it, to bringing back the diamond that we lost to the city and polishing it up and seeing the brightness and what it can do to the city.
Councilman Clark?
Thank you. Thank you. I know we're past our time, so I'll be brief. Couple of questions, since we are talking about the renovation project for Dillon Stadium, we have an ordinance on the books already regarding the structure of fees for Dillon, so I'm assuming that we will have to go back and revisit that to establish a new set of guidelines?
Yep, that's correct. And once, again, once we have a design and we have a better idea of what those fees are, we'll sit down and bring forward a rate schedule for you all. Same thing with the alcohol ordinance. I noted that in the term sheet as well. That's something that we'll have to adjust to allow HSG to sell beer and all sorts of other, whatever they're going to sell. But that's, but those are at least two things that we'll have to come back to for actual ordinance revisions.
Is the, the soccer games, are, they're going to be subject to city's admission tax, or is that going to be going to the state of Connecticut?
I'll let Howard cover that.
The admissions tax for the professional soccer games would be taxed by the state at 10%, and the revenues would go to the state of Connecticut.
All of it?
All of it.
Okay. All right. And my final question regarding the $25,000 community fund, what is going to be the rubric for that? The guidelines? How are you going to establish who gets what? Is it going to be a, from a collective standpoint, recommendation from the mayor and for council to approve? Has there been any thought into that?
There's not a set, a set plan for that. That's a process that will work out over the next year, so it's something that I would hope that we will all have input on and decide what the best use of those funds are, you know, again, whether it's supplying it to schools or an across-the-board reduction in fees. And there's a couple of different ways that we can do that, so we can bring forward proposals and have some community input in that process. Again, that, along with the booking process, is something that we'll all be discussing over the next year, and it's our job to get that piece right and make sure that we've got, again, input from the community and that we've got a functional system that works for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last question that I forgot to ask. Will the community be a part of the design process of the stadium to help inform, you know, what that would look like? Because, you know, they will actually be a major benefactor, and it still would, you know, be community use. However, I know that, you know, given league requirements, there's a certain design requirements, but I'm just curious, is there a part for the community to play in that, that design process?
It's a bear bone stadium.
I'm not sure what you can bring to the design of a bleacher that we haven't thought about, but-
It's a question.
Just a question. You know, look, certainly, we're going to be, community's going to be involved through the BRAC in the decisions inside of Colt, what gets done and how it gets done, and what's the priorities for the park portion. The, you know, honestly, we're taking out the bleachers and putting them back up and fixing the bathrooms.
We'll have enough women's restroom.
There'll be, there'll be, they call that potty parity, and we'll share potty parity in ADA, and, you know, I, we certainly would share the plans with the city, and the city's welcome to share them in the public city hall or domain as they evolve. But I don't want anybody to think that this is the second coming of Foxborough. This is, this is cleaning up basically a soccer field, and putting some bleachers and some concession, new lights, scoreboard. You know, honestly, you're going to, you're going to ask me, what the heck did we do with all the money? But it'll feel and look a lot better, but it's, a lot of money just going to go into places you're never going to see. We're going to lose over a million or two just under the ground. So it's really an engineering more than it is design. I think it's going to be hard to promise something beyond that. But we'll share those plans as they evolve, and the renderings, and send them through City Hall, and you guys can, you know, respond as you want.
Well, thank you. I think it's important for the community to understand the type of design it is and what we're actually doing. So thank you for that. Naming?
Who has input into the name? Would it have Harvard, Connecticut?
Oh, the name of the team? Well, it'll remain Dillon Stadium, correct? Yeah.
Go ahead. No.
They have the naming rights of the team.
Yeah, so HSG has the naming rights, so they'll, they have the ability to select a sponsor or sponsorship, like Dunkin' Donuts Park and that sort of thing. Again, a portion of that naming rights revenue will come to the city in the form of the community fund. I'll let Bruce talk a little bit more about the expected revenue from that, but it's nowhere near what we would expect for something like Dunkin' Donuts Park. It's a smaller-scale stadium. The city does have approval rights or quote-unquote veto power, if you will, so for, you know, anything we might not want it to be named after, or, you know, alcohol, cigarettes, whatever, those sorts of things, we'll have the right to have a conversation about those things.
Thank you, Kylie. And when we do go and name the stadium, we are going to do a commemorative thing for Dillon, for sure. So we're not going to lose the Dillon name completely. We're going to think of ways to celebrate that in its own way, too, as well as the rest of Dillon and its history.
Thank you. So I think with that, this concludes our- So I think with that, this concludes our, this item for the night, and public comments and references item. I want to just say again, thank you to all of you who came out. We had a nice room and, and good community representation. Again, thank you to Jose Colon for hosting us here, as well as the PTO president, Marty Hill. Thank you.
Artie.
Artie, sorry. So with that, I want to make a couple of announcements, because I want to make sure folks know that there's additional opportunity to hear the presentation, meet with the administration, and also Hartford Sports Group, and provide public comment. So this Thursday, April, what's the date on Thursday? April 5th, we have the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, Donna Swar, is a co-chair here. And Craig Murchison is here, the co-chairs. It will be at City Hall in the green room at 5:30 this Thursday, April 5th. Dillon, this is a special meeting just for Dillon. So you will have, again, another opportunity to engage in the proposal, as well as public comment. And then at our next council meeting, which is next Monday, April 9th, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers, we have our monthly open public comment. So that's another opportunity for you to come out and share feedback with regard to this proposal. So again, thank you. And moving on to item number two, we are going to postpone this and set up another COW specific to this agenda item. So with that, I will call for adjournment. Thank you.